My next, hi, Jessica.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Nora.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Teresa.
Hi.
Uh, motion three point one, approval of minutes from Actulix twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, and a motion.
So.
Second.
Discussion.
Linda.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Nora.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Teresa.
Hi.
Gonna point out that, uh, Linda Gratz is remote, but I figured it out yet. She hasn't shown up, but there she is, participating while she's in Georgia, so she's dedicated and we appreciate that. Um, so thank you for joining us, Linda.
Thank you.
Oh, let's see. Personnel items for action, four point one through, did it? Four point one, need a motion?
So.
Okay.
Any discussion on there?
Question, I guess, um, the extra duties, uh, so there's some that, we'll talk slow while I get to this spot here. But like the mentors, there's some that are like times two, times three, um, things like that, it's, I guess. I can get like half a moon, half a year, but I don't even double up on that for mentorship.
A mentor would have two mentors.
Oh, right.
The number tells you how many people are mentored.
So what's on, I don't have my list in front of me, but I think the numbers, it says like, it says set number of teachers in the beginning. But then those numbers don't match up, do you see where, my list is over there.
Here.
Like special, special area coordinator says it's four teachers, but there's still, there's a lot more than four. Um, and then it says like five to six teachers, but then there's not five to six teachers, so I just, I didn't know what the numbers meant.
Two.
I missed what you said, I'm sorry, Teresa.
Under, for the extra duties under position, up at the top actually, so, yeah.
Second.
Um, just like especially area coordinator says four teachers, but then.
That would refer to how many people are in that department, so if there's four or more, that would be the number that are there, so, um.
This, this looks like you have one from each building in that first section, so you've got O E S, maybe a middle school and a high school, representative from the special area department.
So the four teachers is four buildings? I can just confuse what that is.
Yeah, there's, there's one person per building, I think all the way right inside, you can see the.
Oh. Oh, okay, and then same with the five to six teachers, I got them, or seven plus, I guess I was just confused that we're, the numbers weren't matching.
The one, the next layer down, we're seeing all the, oh, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six.
It's the size of the department, so like Jessica Rocco has five to six teachers, she's a, she's a, the lead for, for special areas. So art, so that would be art, music, phys ed, so all the.
That's, okay, I didn't know what that meant.
The other section is, um, P L C Bs.
Okay, because I do know how to count, I was just like.
Okay. So the career center coordinator, career center curriculum coordinator, those are duties above and beyond the day to day.
Yep. So the beyonds, that's for.
What makes it beyond the day?
Oh, he, he does all sorts of outside, um, outside hours, work with different businesses, um, students. He's doing a lot of different things, department of labor, he's involved in a lot of different, um, other pieces that, that position beyond just, um, things that day to day for a certain person.
Just curriculum tied back into the classes from business expansion.
Right, yep.
Um, are you good, Teresa?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'll do.
You're in what, no.
No, I'm, no, I'm good.
Um, what's the half of coach wrestling?
Yeah, so it's, um, Caitlin Minello is all, and then Josh is coming in, so we've done it before with different programs where they're splitting this night to pay.
Okay.
Yeah, they're just letting it go.
Yeah, oh, there's another one on the extra duty portion I had, was, I see the lunch duty, they only have O E S duty, or is there any other ones with, is there O F A and O E S, A E S come through later?
Not for O E S or A E S, there could be something for O F A per contract. Uh, probably, I would guess right now probably it's being covered as a duty versus.
No, they're, they're, they're signed off, they're just getting this stipend.
Okay, yeah. They just haven't been, but.
Yeah.
They just don't come forward.
Yes. Yeah, they're blessed that they're willing to, they just have to be submitted for the license, then they'll be going forward, yeah.
That's in the contract, I think, or secondary, where essentially they give up their lunch to, work lunch duty.
Hi, it's, um, I'm just looking, there was a lot of movement in the food service department, is there like a reorganization going on here or something? It just seems like a lot of people are going out.
No, it's just a lot of people coming and going.
Times and come and go, and that's just more.
They're three point seven five hour positions, so they have a lot of, just a lot of movement in general.
Yeah, I know, and then I, I want to question to answer, um, I was just, I was looking at the automotive, automotive, we can, twenty dollars an hour, I'm just trying to find something for that. Like, we're hiring our tutors for fifteen, fifteen, something like that.
Very challenging, for sure, but it's a contract.
That's a contractual thing?
Yeah, yep.
Is this person experienced?
Yep, I believe he has some experience, but it's, it's an ongoing challenge, for sure.
Yeah, I would, I would think so. Is there a max? Because you have benefits, and that why you make it purely.
And in most cases, it's the benefit of the pitch that will entice, uh, people to come.
Really, you need to go out into the workforce and make a lot more than that.
But you'll see out, you're right, you'll see out in the workforce where, you know, they'll get dangled, three, four, or five dollars an hour more, and they'll jump ship and go sometimes, so it's.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a challenging position to, uh, fill in school districts, for sure.
Yeah, and they're contractual too.
Yep.
But they do get benefits and stuff, because I know that's why a lot of the teachers say they can make a lot of money, but they enjoy the benefits of that.
Right, you got the correct.
Um, is there a max number of extra duties that someone can hold, both in number of duties and or dollar amount they can?
I believe there's, there's anything in the contract that speaks about that.
How are duties assigned, is it optional, or does every teacher in their schedule get assigned one duty and they get a prep and a duty?
Yeah, for, like, from a, from a I F standpoint, again, this has just been for, for years since, since I've been, well, before I've been there. Obviously, teachers, depending on what their content is, if they have six classes, it, it, they're, they're pretty loaded up, and you factor in lunch and prep. We don't get them a duty, but it, it fluctuates, it all depends on, you know, the availability of the day, who's, who's available during lunch. This year it's been a luxury because teachers signed up to cover lunch duty this year and take the stipend. Um, but hall duty is based on availability within the departments, and we talk with each individual department, talk about what we're looking after covered from that standpoint. But, yeah, we typically try to avoid overloading the teacher when they have, you know, five, six classes plus their lunch and prep, so, yep.
So second, is there a second for all duty? Just for lunch?
It's just lunch duty and their contract, yep.
Yeah, one last question, just for the athletics, if we have just processed, I know for other positions, we, we, multiple folks apply, we interview, that's, the same happened for the, the coaches, assistants, and things like that. If we had more than one.
Yep.
All right, so for all of these positions that were coming through, we have the right number of interviews and such things?
Yep. So.
Linda?
Linda?
Hi. Jessica?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Okay, finance, items five point one, treasures report, recommended by the board of education, approve the treasures report as presented. Need a motion for that?
So.
Second.
Are you doing, um, you doing that?
Okay. Discussion?
Just a question, and we have a point about the, the, uh, L G I, that's right, I know with weight room and things like that. What line in the budget approval, do those changes and stuff like that fall under? And if you don't know, like, obviously.
As far as, L G I is in capital, right, capital property.
Okay, but I know weight room move wasn't.
No, wait, that's just part, yeah, part summer maintenance custodial.
And the, something, okay.
I have a quest, question just on abbreviation, under, what is S W D for programs?
Students with disabilities.
Oh, I thought everything else was that. Oh, and then, um, you probably said this before, and I apologize, but the enclosed trailer.
Yeah.
What is that being used for?
So we, uh, previously we used a school bus for family reading partnership, I don't know if you remember the red school bus that was all at that period, well, that's no longer able to go on the road. Um, for D O T purposes, so, uh, we've been working with family reading partnership and, um, purchasing a, a large trailer that will be equipped so that they can kind of do the same thing. And be a little easier to take it around within the community as well. Having to keep up with the D O T and the H bus becomes a kind of a challenge.
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Uh, hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Did it grow up, five point two?
You said yes. So.
Okay, uh, six missing is C P S, E C S, D five oh four, recommendation, recommended that, uh, you know, five oh fourteen, I hear, by approve by the board, need a motion?
So.
So.
Need a motion two? So fast. Owen?
Where you at?
I'm close to two, I said we're so fast.
Yeah.
Okay, discussion?
I do, yeah. Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mike? Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Okay, uh, presence report, let me talk a little bit about the audit that we boarded on back in, uh, February tenth. And, uh, as you know, that we hired an external firm to do, basically, uh, procedures audit for capital purchases and kind of policy procedure about taking it up, all of that, based on, uh, risk assessment, that was included by T S T Bosse. And, uh, had some conversations, uh, with B T Bosse, said the C B O, um, participate, and there was, uh, some, you say, kind of hurdles that we weren't able to get over. Uh, our auditors are, would like to meet individually with certain people, and, uh, it looks like that is not going to happen, so. That we, we need to make a decision on how we're going to proceed to accomplish that task. And, uh, the language in, uh, seven point two under discussion is in there, and this doesn't mean that a vote would then trigger an automatic shift in our direction. But it would certainly allow us to respond more quickly, um, if nothing changes, uh, the original discussion on how the audit was going to proceed. So, um, I need a motion to look at the language on there, and need a motion on that, and we have a discussion after, what?
Second.
Second.
Second, uh, discussion.
You just repeat that, I'm sorry, so approval does not necessarily mean ac, action?
It doesn't mean action right now, it means that, uh, so let's say this is approved, it would allow us to, if everyone else does, uh, intended to be part of the audit, participates, you can make a decision to move forward at that point in time. I don't think everyone's been able to meet with the auditor. So if there's any discussion, I know Dr. Stone's here for B T Bosse, another around the, uh, two minute public speak, uh, portion of the agenda, if you wanted to say something now, I'm very welcome to, since it's tied right to this.
Sure.
Okay.
So, uh, based on the T S T audit, we've done an internal correction plan, or, or corrective action plan, similar to what you would do. I do have those, um, corrective action pieces, if it's something that you wanted to hear. Like, honestly, I don't think I can do it in two minutes, I'm not that fast, uh, but I did want to clarify, the auditor wants to speak with six individuals at B T Bosse's through the central business office. And, um, the request was to be with the person alone, and to be able to ask whatever it is that they wished. And we said that they would be welcome to come and, and interview those six individuals, and, um, we would have someone sit in, because it's not an audit for our Bosse's. And we want to make sure that the individuals feel comfortable, um, we also asked that they provide the questions, so that they would have the opportunity to think about the questions and make sure that the answers that they gave, um, were detailed as much as they could. And gives them a minute to reflect, gives them time to look at information if they need to, um, because they work with many districts, and so there's a lot of information that they filter through. So, um, I'm just here to see if you have questions about that.
Um, I don't know if we typically have a Q and A back and forth, but I, I can add, and you just, you've got to give me a flag if I'm, if I'm misstating anything.
Okay.
One of the reasons, we also ran a little bit of a site, and said there apparently is a relationship between, um, the employee who would be sitting in on those interviews and our former board member. And I think that presented an issue, which you graciously said that you would switch the person out of the department, have somebody else come in that wouldn't be that person. I think that was, maybe it was, make it, uh, clear that you, you, you will, you work with us, um, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I, I don't think our auditor said that that was a, I think she said it would narrow the scope too much, that it would be a waste of time and resources, in her opinion, that is not, not our opinion, it's her opinion, so.
Your opinion's her opinion.
Yeah, so, um, it's kind of where we are again, this doesn't mean we're going to move forward with anything in particular that's different, uh, than our net, our initial intent, that's not my decision, we'll meet with the board and, uh, see. But if anyone has any specific questions or comments?
Well, my, I guess my question is that you want, you want an additional person in the room during the audit questions to make sure that the employee being questioned is, is comfortable?
Correct.
Um, what happens if the employee that's being part of the audit is not comfortable having somebody in there, that then?
So, and, and it's not necessarily their decision, um, information that would be shared with the auditors, also information that we would need to know, so that we could make sure that we're prepared for whatever it is that we need to do. So if an, if an employee gets nervous, and they start talking about different things, and they miss something up, or they give information that they're not sure is correct, it's really hard for them to then say to their boss, you know, I, I, I said something incorrect, I didn't mean to say X, Y, Z, because they're not sitting there with them. It's, if you had someone come in and wanted to interview your staff, you would also want to have someone there. It's not an unreasonable request. Our attorneys feel that it's very appropriate. So that would be why we're doing what we're doing.
So what would the role that they're supposed to be, would they interject during the interview? Like, if they saw something going on, that they were questionable, or they didn't mind, they saw the person was uncomfortable, I mean, what would their role be? Is it where they're listening and watching, or would they actually talk?
So, if they were sitting in the interview and it was apparent that the employee was becoming very uncomfortable?
Uh-huh.
I would give them latitude to stop it. So your auditor is trying to find information, um, and this is more, um, seeking information on a personal level, so not allowing the people to sit with their computer or with the information that's going to help them to be able to answer the questions. It's, um, excuse me. So you're reply, you're relying on their memory. It's, it's an unfair ask of that employee. If it were me, it would make me really uncomfortable.
So when did you become aware of the TST risk assessment?
We got the risk assessment the same time you did, well, shortly after you did it.
And so we did a corrective action plan?
Yes, we did.
And what was your corrective, I mean, since it was our risk assessment, have you communicated with the district regarding the corrective action plan that we put in place? Because as a board, we're not aware of a corrective action plan.
So it's our corrective action plan for the things that we did within our school district. One of the components that was most glaring for your district was the, the piece that talked about procurement and purchasing practices. And in that piece, it did talk about making sure that districts understood that they were not going to process any purchase orders unless they had supporting documents. That went out to all 15 component school districts. I believe that, you have a copy of that somewhere.
The letter, yeah.
Yep.
I believe we saw it.
Yep. And that was, that was the most important piece. I think the other pieces that were part of the corrective action plan talked about the fixed assets. Um, I believe that one was taken care of because there was a full physical inventory that was done over the summer. And then our corrective action plan includes reaching out to the district, when new purchases are purchased, and making sure that those are tagged and in the inventory. They've had no additional findings on our end that way. Uh, the other ones was the bidding and the RFP, uh, process, making sure that they went through, um, within our system, we make sure that the purchasing guidelines for the board are in there, but we also make sure that we're meeting the general municipal law, um, contract. So we went through and we made sure that that was there. We, um, looked at the, the announcing of the bids. Within this audit, it talked about, uh, putting out announcements for the capital project. And announcements for the capital project is done at the district level. Um, and those are supplied usually by either the architect or the construction manager. The only bidding that we put out, the announcements that we put out, is for general fund. That includes things like art, PE, um, janitorial services, teaching supplies, those pieces. So that pieces in there, um, talked about contract documentation. And it was reiterated that the purchasing agents will request that attach all relevant contracts, bids, documents, rate sheets, um, and that they are not to process anything beyond that if they don't have supporting documents. Um, the PO changes and approvals. Capital POs will not be increased for capital orders or contract amendments without documentation from the Board of Ed or, um, Board of Ed policies. The CBO internal claims auditor will continue to reject claims that are missing the necessary documents. Um, it is noted in here that it talks about, um, the, the appropriate Board of Ed resolution and approvals will be attached, and that the claims auditors will continue to go through those. But one of the pieces with, um, it talks about change orders and thresholds, that is really independent per contractor, per, uh, district. So sometimes those change orders are change orders, and sometimes there are changes on T and M, and as long as they're coming out of the appropriate lines, they check those to make sure that those are appropriate. Talked about requisition compliance. So requisitions that are lacking the appropriate backup are going to be, um, delayed or rejected at the purchasing level. We also put in place at their manager level to go through and do, um, spot checks with those, or if a particular district is having issues, make sure we go through those on a more consistent basis. The one piece in here that the, um, risk assessment talked about, the purchase order for rolling of POs for capital projects. So if the CBO does roll those from year to year and there's a reason for that, it is a best practice to keep it going and not to close it out for multiple-year projects. Um, it ensures that the POs are brought forward and makes sure that the, the balance is brought down appropriately. Still requires the backup documents, um, but it doesn't make sense to close it out at the end of the year, not for capital projects that are multi-years.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, we had a conversation a little bit about that in the phone, maybe? And that's, that's part of the question, I may have phrased that inappropriately. Uh, really what I was looking for is, I wanted to know, and I don't think, I don't think we've got any yet, in terms of, the first, if there's a capital project that's bid on, everything that's bid on, I just wanted to see when everything that was bid on was completed. And that might blend into the next capital project, but I think it's reasonable to expect to be able to tease out what we've bid on, get the original bid, and get when all that stuff is completed, what was the final purchase, what was the final cost? That's what I, I kind of, I mean, you've been interested in.
And most of that is through your, your capital project, um, your contract management?
Yeah.
They're the ones that keep track of the funding that goes with that. Um, they're the ones that help with the supporting documents if it's not within your business office. And then the central business pays out when it's appropriate and then has the, the documents that go in there.
Yeah, all those, um, cost reports are sent.
Right. Um, it talks a little bit in our corrective action plan about the responsible parties and then who is the person that's responsible. Um, I know our CBO has really had to go through with our purchasing agents and making sure that they understood that they have the authority to stop something and ask for those documents. But in the end, you have to realize that we are doing a service for a, a school district. So if the school district wants something to be paid out and it doesn't have the appropriate documents, then we'll do so because that's what the school district says. I did ask how often that happens, and it hasn't happened since the turnover with Kathy Blackman and Angela. And looking back, 99% of everything with payout has their supporting documents. It's not always in the same place. Sometimes it might be attached to your PO, sometimes it's logged in, excuse me, another place in the system, but 99% of the time it's there. And if you ask me if the, the contract for the CM is in there, it is not. We're still working on that and trying to find, or working with the district to figure out where that is.
So the maintenance counter, is that what you referred to?
Mm-hmm. No, it's, it's what, whatever is with TMCO. So I think, my understanding is that's the, um-
I think it's the maintenance counter separately dropped up.
Is it separate?
I think so, from the CM counter.
But there was a resolution on how that is to be paid, and that can be in place of a contract as well. That was my understanding. That's how they're continuing to pay them.
Yeah, so, and, uh, I know that you wanted, uh, if we wanted to see it, we'd foil a, foil a request.
Mm-hmm.
Is that what you just went through?
Yes.
Okay, so, you know, if we wanted to just get a copy of that to have, and we could foil it, and have a copy of it to, to the cap.
And the only reason we do that is that's our normal procedure.
Completely understood that, it's not a judgment at all, because I appreciate you coming here and sharing with us, and, uh, but I think, you know, this is why, this is a tentative issue. And that, I think every, you know, everyone needs to be spoken to in terms of having an opportunity to share with the auditor, you know, what it is that, um, your perspective is on this whole process, to go through the lines that were outlined on the risk assessment. And then, after all that information is gathered, then we can make a, an educated decision on whether we run a little path forward or not. So, I appreciate any other. No, good. Thank you very much for coming. So now we need a vote? Need a motion to vote? Oh, we had a motion, we just need to vote. On the language, uh, 7.2.
I'm sorry, I missed that, I would do a great, I mean-
Probably there are, because you've been timing.
Yeah, because I, we need a motion.
Uh, was this the timing?
Was that the double?
Yeah, Jessica.
I think I seconded it.
Oh, okay. So can you just review for me what the motion is, or will be?
What the vote is?
Right.
Uh, motion is upon motion, is resolved, the Board of Education, when that approves and authorizes contact with the office of New York State Controller for technical assistance. The Board of Education's previous, previously approved external audit regarding capital project process and procedure, and Board for the, well, authorizes president, as the Board's liaison for such technical assistance. And then you should say, if necessary.
If necessary.
So, let's say, as you know, we, we, we voted this, on this, on February 10th, prior to your arrival. So, as you can imagine, this was just way too long, so, we're not going to move on this until everything is completed, but I don't want to wait another board meeting and have another vote later. It's approved, if we get the information, we're ready to make a decision on how to proceed, then we can proceed without having to either call a, another emergency meeting to have a vote, it's voted on, we can move forward if that's what we decide.
So this is kind of like a to-be-determined?
Well, I mean, you got, well, this is kind of what I was hoping, I really appreciate you coming down and sharing, but I think there are things that, uh, we, it's a serious decision, so we need to be fully aware. I think there are people internally who are going to speak with the auditor and just, you know, get all the information. I'm not asking you to make an uninformed decision, but get as much information as possible. Uh, and it is a to-be-determined, so, we approve it, we gather more information, we foil the corrective action plan, we can utilize that to kind of, uh, give us more information. Uh, Linda, the auditor, will have a report before we move forward, um, that she can say what, what her conclusions are, and then we can make a decision. If all that happens before December 4th, is it the afternoon? December 7th?
Eight of the eighth.
September 8th, before December 8th, till we can decide. Good?
Good. Jessica?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Linda. Linda?
I apologize, but you all are breaking up. I just had, before we, we take a vote here, I just want a clar- clarification. Joe, um, where are we in regards to the interviews that the auditor still needs to do for the way we have, like, in district? Are we close to being done so that we can get a report before our December 8th meeting?
Uh, I hope so. I can't, I can't guarantee it, and, and I think we, you know, I just mentioned that this has been, we, we approved it on February 10th.
Right.
And, and we're still in the process, there's been different reasons as to why this has taken so long, but-
Yes.
I do believe that some meetings are on the docket, whether I can confirm that it's on the 8th or not, I, I, I can't. If it will be done by the 8th, I can't.
So, so just to make sure I heard clearly, because it is difficult being zoomed in here, is that we're, we're working towards a, a foil, the corrective action plan that the group type in the Voces did, for CBO, with regards to the risk assessment, we just want to see that documentation. And also, what we're approving here through a vote is just the language that we're going to move forward with, having the controller get involved with, uh, this if necessary. Is that what, is that, am I hearing and understanding this clearly, Joe?
Correct, correct. And it's, it's under 7.2.
Yes.
If you need to look, yep.
Right, yep. Okay. All right. So, yes?
Jessica?
Yes.
Mike? Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John? Teresa?
Hi.
Okay, moving on, 8.1, Committee Reports.
Oh, we had one policy, 5550, state privacy under the Protection of People Rights Amendment for PUP. And, uh, last meeting, they had a couple of things to, to look at. Simply, uh, we're given two options, option A or B. Option A was following all federal laws, and, uh, that seemed to make the most sense. And then we had to choose the time at which, um, parents had or students had to opt out of, um, surveys and that sort of thing. And we agreed to 10 days after the notice was sent. So that's one change we're up to. Yeah, we'll stay. Yep. That's it.
Okay. Uh, you okay?
I need a-
Motion.
Motion?
Uh, make a motion to have policy 5515 approved.
Thank you. Linda?
Aye.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora? John?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Okay, just have a couple, I just want to recognize Lorraine Wyler, who was on the agenda for pool donation of $10,000. That's been a continuous ongoing thing, you know, for at least the time that I've been here, and believe, uh, from years prior, so just want to publicly thank her, uh, for her continued support of the pool. And following that line today, I, I shared with our staff, and I know that it's, it's already hit the media a little bit, and will, a little bit more, uh, but the district received an $811,000 grant from, uh, the work of Senator Schumer and, and Jill Brand. Um, so we're certainly, um, really thankful for their efforts and keeping us in mind, we were one of three projects in the Southern Tier that received funding. Um, it's all connected to the Career Tech Ed Center and, and workforce development, um, push that we've had here for quite some time, so we're really excited to be able to receive that. Wasn't sure of timing when this was going to come to fruition, so it kind of came up on us a little quicker than I thought for. But, uh, anyway, we're, we're really pleased and, um, certainly, kind of expressed our, our gratitude to Senator Schumer's office and Jill Brand's office as well for their, their support of our school district. Schumer, for sure, has been for years and years and years of, uh, a strong supporter for the community and the district in general, so certainly, certainly a good thing for us. And again, those funds will be allocated towards enhancements to the, um, Career Tech Ed Center, which we worked collaboratively with Voces on, and there are Voces Career Tech Ed programs there, so updating some spaces there. We also have another grant that we're expecting, uh, to receive the official paperwork shortly, that will be for about a million dollars, that will be allocated as well to that building. Um, so lots of excitement, um, in funding opportunities that, that came about around things that, you know, we've been focused on here in terms of career development, workforce development, and career tech ed, uh, for our students, so. Lots of opportunities for kids, and, uh, there's going to be an adult component, opportunity to it as well, uh, which will be exciting for, for Tyler County.
Which building this is?
It's a, a maintenance building that we have our Career Tech Ed programs there now. That's a, that's a building that we leased to Voces.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just curious about, um, like, did we apply for the grant or what's that?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, we applied for the, uh, both of these grants. So have to, uh, credit Tyler County Economic Workforce Development, um, for their support and helping us through the process with the grants and things of that nature, so they've been extremely supportive, always willing to work with us and point us in the right direction when things are coming up. Um, so, you know, we're really fortunate to be able to-
Yeah.
-get these grants.
Who was that that you sent help?
Um, Tyler County Workforce Development.
Is that a county?
Like, a, like a workforce development, yeah.
That's good.
So, yeah, very, very, very supportive and helpful.
Was it really, must have been very competitive?
Yeah, they're always, they're always quite competitive, yeah. So I know Senator Schumer felt strongly that it was a project that he wanted to continue to support. Last year, the congressional funding had gotten pulled.
Yeah.
Um, and he went back to it again as a, as a support item, so to be one of three- Um, and he went back to it again as a, as a support item, so to be one of three in the southern tier, that's really good for us. Uh, let's see, so I wanna congratulate you to our volleyball team, they had a great run this year. Had tough games this weekend in, in the regional playoff, um, but all in all, really just an incredible season, again, out of our volleyball program. Congrats to our cross-country teams, I know our girls did extremely well in sectionals, we had four girls go into states and I believe three boys, uh, go into states, I know many of them, um, had their personal best times, um, at the state, so a little chilly out there, but to think that, you know, maybe it ran a lot harder, I don't know. Our football team, just wanna congratulate the football program, it's our first ever section four title, they've been working really hard at this for quite some time. So it's exciting to see that come to fruition, and they'll play this Saturday against New Hartford at three o'clock over at the St. High School, so that will be a, a state playoff game there. So we hope to see a, a lot of folks there. And then before I turn it over to, uh, Mr. Muckless and Mr. Schofield, just wanna recognize the presentations tonight that were done, uh, by some of our staff, our students. Uh, always love to see the engagement and the collaboration between staff and student programs that are going on and to really hear kids talk about their, their opportunities and experiences, so thanks for, for doing that. And I'll turn it over to you guys, gonna give your spotlight on the bill.
Again, thank you, uh, for those of you who were able to make it, it was a great opportunity for our kids, again, to spotlight a lot of the programs that we saw today. Um, and then you factor in, you hear something about, you know, John East Cross Country, Pat and Taylor's football team, and they're doing great things in and out of the classroom. So it's, i- it's really a testament to them, and that's why their programs are growing, so we appreciate that. Um, these are things that we've discussed, I know we met, um, not that long ago, uh, as a group with administration, uh, continuing to focus on obviously our graduation rate. That goal continues to be the same, exceed ninety-five percent and decrease that dropout rate less than three percent. Um, we're keeping that state, uh, assessment proficiency level, I know we talked about passing rate, you'll see in a little bit why we focus on the proficiency and mastery levels. Uh, so that goal continues to be the same for us as well. Um, and measuring, as you got to see, a lot of those connections today, uh, with the college and career readiness. That's a goal that we wanna continue to measure, and we work with our guidance staff, uh, really focusing on what are our kids involved in, what programs, what courses they're taking, college level. Are they going into the workforce, are they in our CTE programs, we're really trying to track that from our students, and that's really extending down even in, starting as early as middle school, seventh and eighth grade. What electives they're getting involved in, where is that path gonna take them, so that continues to be an area of focus for us as well. Uh, snapshot of, you know, obviously, over the past X amount of years, uh, and most recently, we just added obviously our graduation rate, um, for twenty twenty-five, last year's graduating seniors. Uh, overall, uh, if you wanna look at just a breakdown of the building itself, uh, some specifics, obviously this year, uh, ninth through twelfth grade, five hundred and ninety-one total students. And then obviously you can see, uh, ninth through twelfth, the breakdown by grade level, um, we just spoke about some of our programs in athletics. Uh, Ryan was able to help me just break down the specifics from last year's group, obviously we'll continue on with fall just ending or almost ending. Um, last year we had a hundred and thirty-nine scholar athletes in the fall, sixty-three in the winter, uh, and a hundred and thirty-three scholar athletes in the spring, obviously this is taken from our varsity teams, uh, when we look at scholar athletes. So well-rounded students, and that continues to be the trend as we look at what we get from our students in all of our athletics.
When we look at music, a hundred and sixty-five students, twelve in band and chorus, um, you know, one of those class size of a hundred and fifty students, that's a significant portion of our population. Another musical, uh, last year was Late Biz, uh, what is, what is this year?
Uh, this year is High School Music.
High School Music.
Yes.
Sorry, it's not working right now, forty-five cast members, three orchestra members, a fifteen stage group, so I know we went last year and we joined that, and it was a great show.
Yep, they're excited and ready to go. Uh, this got pushed out to families, students, uh, community members, obviously, when you start looking at, we've been highlighting this a lot because we continue to see that upward trend. Uh, I'm in year four back at the high school, and you look at last year's seniors, seventy-five percent, uh, of our total students received college credit. Um, you factor in fifty-eight percent of those students with fifteen plus college credits, um, the continued trend of opportunities, and I look at it as, yes, this is a, uh, this was a great graduating class last year, when you look at a hundred and sixty-five kids, I believe that it was a hundred and twenty-four graduated with some sort of college credit. Uh, but the opportunities that we give students, it's not just about our highest of the high students, it's opportunities for all students to achieve this success, whether it's CTE or college-based. And giving them opportunities, do I want AP, do I want it to be for college credit, do I want just AP? A lot of times you often see students get left out of the fold when it comes to opportunities for them, uh, and we give those opportunities. We actually had several students, you probably have the exact number, um, from an AP standpoint that said, you know what, we don't offer that AP course here at OFA this year, but I wanna go to a certain college and I, I wanna challenge that exam. Uh, not every school allows that, uh, not every school wants to take that on and say, well, we don't teach it, so we're not gonna allow that course to be taken for the exam. We encourage it.
Physics, chemistry, and AP Euro, were the three that were challenged by our students. I believe we have four for chemistry, one for physics, and one for AP Euro that, um, we allowed to, it's a challenge. Uh, they just worked on their own, they worked with the teachers to, to kind of support them in that process, uh, but they didn't have an actual course as of yet, um, that we're offering here at OFA. Um, you know, as we're looking at APs, and we'll talk a little bit more, but we're looking to constantly expand our offerings to our students.
Just so I'm curious, how'd they do?
Uh, well, actually, I didn't even.
So the scores, you know, when they're direct instruction were much higher, um, you know, compared to what they, they did with the challenge, but just having that opportunity, in my opinion, having that, giving that student the opportunity to take a test and see it at that level. And to see what they're going to be taking in college in the year that's coming, and show them exactly how hard it is, you know, having that support in place rather than not, I think that's as much of a learning experience as it is just having them, you know, sit through a course and, and be kind of led in that direction.
Yeah, it was definitely a good learning experience for those kids.
Uh, thanks, Mark.
Uh, and again, just kind of looking at this overall, um, you could see over time, when you go back to as far back, and I know it's small, I tried to put it on the page, twenty-one, twenty-two, up until present day, graduating class last year. The amount of college credits that we offer over time, as you could see, over four thousand college credits, uh, and obviously, as you've heard from the previous, you know, discussions, we've had twenty-six associate's degrees last year, which is our highest ever. Uh, and that continues to be an upward trend, um, and then obviously, as you look at overall, uh, you know, the behind-the-scenes piece to this is, we have to have the teachers that are willing to do this. Take that extra step, go that extra mile, work with TC three, work with BCC. We have in our catalog and our guide for students to select courses, upwards of forty-four courses in our course catalog. We can't do that without the teachers, they have to go do that PD with TC three, they have to go that extra mile and make sure their curriculum is up to par in order to give those kids college credits. They're not just handing it out to us, uh, so that's a testament to our staff and the fact that we now offer forty-four college-based courses. Do they take forty-four every year? No, all depends on the number of students, uh, choosing to take courses, but that's pretty amazing when you think about, on average, graduating classes anywhere between one fifty to one sixty. Uh, that's a, a phenomenal opportunity for our students. Uh, like I said, I was pretty close, total number of students with college credits last year was a hundred and twenty-four kids out of a class of one sixty-five. Uh, and important to note, um, and it kind of got cut off, over two hundred thousand dollars in local scholarships were awarded last year to our seniors, so that's pretty amazing.
And in addition to those, uh, students that did get TC three, um, associate's degrees, we had multiple students that had the correct amount of credits, they just didn't have the correct course progression. So they chose to take a different course, so they didn't finish the course progression, so I think we had like five or six that had the, the credits on top of the number that were actually awarded.
Yes, so if you look at that, there was seventy-plus credits awarded to, I believe that says eighteen right there, yeah, eighteen of our students, so, yeah, they chose not to go down the specific path to receive that associate's because they wanted to branch off and take different courses, but eighteen great kids graduating with seventy-plus credits is pretty amazing. Uh, again, just, just brief snapshots of some things throughout the building, uh, when you're talking about fall, for this year, um, you know, students taking college courses in the fall, we have about two hundred and nine students, uh, comparing enrollment. Seven students are also taking online courses, which is, uh, it's continuing to be increasing, that they could partner with TC three and do that, um, to receive nineteen total credits. Um, total credits with TC three, uh, for the fall is a little over thirteen hundred, thirteen twenty. Twenty associate's degrees as it stands right now, we are on track for, for this year with our seniors, uh, and right now with our juniors, there are twenty-eight students who are on track from an associate's degree standpoint.
Uh, we currently have five students who go to BCC, um, health science is always a big one for our students, as we talk to them, many of our students wanna go into health science in some format, you saw that earlier today during the presentation from some of our students, and then we also have electronics, um, which is type of engineering courses there. Um, college career readiness, we have a hundred and ten students enrolled, um, between eleventh and twelfth grade at the BOSI CTE program. Uh, seventy-seven percent of our class last year attended college, two percent joined the military, and nineteen percent entered the workforce, so pretty solid numbers.
Um, overall, we, we've been talking about attendance, you've heard it from all the buildings as well, it, it is still probably one of our number one priorities, is how do we continue to make sure all of our kids feel welcomed? All of our kids feel a part of something, uh, so obviously, as you could see, uh, since coming back to the high school, we have seen increases, which is what we want, obviously, we want it to be a hundred percent. Uh, but over time, we've seen increases, I think a lot of it has to do with, you know, analyzing everyday labs in our child study discussions about what are the trends we're seeing from students, um, in terms of trying to get them involved, whether it's clubs and activities, which we've done, uh, a better job having a more conscious effort of communicating to families, what clubs do we have to offer? A lot of times students don't, might not, not, will not wanna branch out and find out what's available. If families are aware, it's a good way for them to nudge their kids in the right direction, uh, in regards to what's available to them. Uh, we're sending out monthly updates out of the building level, out of our office, just to remind them of the, the great things happening, the things that we have coming up. Um, but also planning events for kids, um, getting them to come in and present, uh, finding those opportunities for them to stress the good things they're doing. Planning events when you see a huge uptick, when you talk about a spirit week, it's amazing to see an increase, uh, in attendance overall as a building, when you plan events around for our kids that they're excited about. Dances, we always try to, that's an adjustment we've made, is try and incorporate dances around short weeks, uh, going into long weekends, because let's face it, those who have worked at high school levels know when you get to that Friday or that Thursday afternoon, and they know there's no school Friday or no school Monday, I'm just gonna take the extra day off and extend the week, or the long weekend. We try to incorporate events like dances to keep those kids there and come at night to try and increase that attendance, and I think it's helped based off what we're seeing there.
Uh, regarding AP exams, last year we had a hundred and thirteen students who took exams, a hundred and sixty-one total exams were taken tonight. Uh, I just actually registered for our AP exams, um, a hundred and twenty-six students are currently registered for two hundred and eighteen total exams currently. Um, we did expand our AP course offering this year down to tenth grade for ten, uh, tenth grade English seminar. Um, we are going to be adding research next year, that is part of, if they take both those courses plus an additional six, they can actually be part of the AP capstone program, which is an expansion we're looking. Uh, we also are looking to expand in math and other areas to expand our course offerings for AP, to give students four options for, you know, APs to get that additional college credit that we, um, currently don't have. Uh, along with that, we're also looking at expanding into online programs for all students, um, for electives that we might not have the staff to, uh, support currently, so entrepreneurship, personal community, uh, professional communication. Um, also, there's a lot of health sciences, a lot of courses that we can add in addition to the, our current, current course offerings that we have. So we're always looking to expand our offerings to give our students more options, to get them into those careers and in the pathways that they want to be in.
If they, if they take an online course, um, above the colleges, is it part of their scheduled day, how does that work?
So that's currently what we're looking at and we're, we're discussing, uh, we have a period of the day where we do provide support for students, and the idea is that that would be the time when we have staff assigned to those students to work with them and to be giving them support in those courses, so that's kind of where we are right now, we're trying to figure out the logistics, um, but it is an important part of what we're doing.
And a lot of our students too, that decide, you know what, I wanna take an online course over the summer, uh, we get an influx of kids who say, you know what, I want to take AP seminar, AP research during the school year, but I just don't have enough time in the day. Um, what can I take so, our guidance does a great job connecting with them to say, well, if you wanted to take a health, if you wanted to take a specific course, and it, it could be participation in government, it could be economics. Uh, they could partner with TC three to do that, and then free up that time during their day to add to their course load if them and their families are in agreement that that's what they wanna do.
And they have opportunities to take asynchronous courses as well?
Yep, yep. Yeah. Uh, and then I, I briefly mentioned this, you know, we talked about, yes, passing rate obviously is, you know, we want all of our students to pass. Uh, this is a snapshot of Regent's exams from last year, uh, we put in there, you're looking at proficiency rate in mastery. Um, obviously, you know, as you look at it as a whole, yeah, ELA, um, if you look at it when we took it in January, as the entire group, uh, eighty-one percent of our students were proficient. Fifty-two percent were mastery, that number went down a little bit when we factored in the June Regent's exams as well. Uh, math did very well proficiency-wise overall as a whole last year, uh, and the same with social studies. Um, from the science standpoint, yeah, there's all brand-new exams, uh, from the state that we're working through, so proficiency-wise, yeah, that's fifty-four percent, but that's not passing. That's proficiency, and we continue to look at the proficiency and mastery side of things, uh, so yeah, there, there's room to grow, um, as we work through all new exams in biology, earth science, chemistry, and physics, uh, are both seeing new exams as well this year as well.
Uh, English also, we'll have a June.
English will be as well.
Um, the willingness of our teachers to jump at these new exams and kind of take that leap, it's, has been amazing to watch. Um, they're going to do the trainings that are BOSI's that bring the time in, uh, because they are really changing up the manner in which they're testing our students. Um, as we go through the Blue Ribbon Initiative, the Blue Ribbon Mission, uh, there's going to be more changes coming, so we're kind of navigating that process right now, which has been exciting for the opportunities that we're going to have for students, um, but again, these scores with the changes in tests, teachers aren't aware, they don't come out and say, this is what the test is going to look like, it's, here's a June exam, you know, kind of jump into the water.
Uh, and, and overall, obviously, we've heard as we met, um, over a month ago, as we continue down that path of, you know, the fact that we are seeing changes from the state, that we are focusing on our areas of study. You saw a snapshot of our health science courses, uh, in the collaboration space earlier tonight, um, we are continuing to grow that in business, we are continuing to look at areas of study that our students are interested in, and that's, that's where Tom West got in the career center comes into play, um, and we have to provide those areas where our students are driving towards, this is what I wanna do, whether it's CTE or specific areas of study that are gonna expand into, I have to take that next step of college. It's our jobs to make sure the courses are available to them and we have those opportunities for them, so obviously, vision and mission continues to be our focus from the areas of study and the pathways that we offer for our students, and again, continuing that, not just college, but also career and technical education, uh, utilizing our career center and, uh, continuing to work, um, with our guiding coalition at the high school level, that incorporates guidance, that incorporates teachers, uh, trying to get everyone in the fold to make those decisions that's best for our kids and giving them the opportunities.
And during this process, making sure that we're individualizing the learning for each student, we're targeting how they learn, what they wanna learn, and where they wanna go, so it's not just a one-size-fits-all, and we're not trying to piss, we're having to go around the whole, we're really making sure that we're doing things in a way that identifies and works with each student individually.
And overall, I, again, I, I don't have to read bullet by bullet, but, um, goals and aspirations, yeah, we, we always have room to grow, uh, there's always things that we can do better with, you know, continuing to expand, as you've heard throughout the evening here with TC three and BCC, getting kids to go on campus at BCC and have that college experience because that's what they want, and we should try to find a way to give them that opportunity and continue to grow that. Um, again, the internships you're hearing about, you're seeing students get hand-on experience with our trainer, Amanda, and be able to go in and work after school and be with those athletic teams because that's what they wanna do with their career. We gotta find the right people, and I think we have those people, which is why you're seeing those programs, uh, and giving these kids the hands-on opportunities that they're seeing so far. Um, and again, that vertical alignment, I know you're gonna hear more, I'm not gonna take much, uh, in regards to the middle school end of things, but you're gonna hear a lot about what they've done at the middle school to make changes, to create electives for our students that connect with the pathways and the areas of study that we offer at the high school level, uh, so this is expanding down into the middle school. Uh, when you really start looking at what our eighth graders are doing right now, that vertical piece of aligning with what we offer is huge for our kids because it exposes them, not only to what we offer at the high school, but but starting to figure out what their skills are and where they think they can go in their lives. And it doesn't have to be decided within eighth grade, but it's at least exposing them to what's out there.
It's really important to say that none of this, you know, we're up here talking about these amazing things that are happening, could happen without the amazing staff that we have. They go above and beyond every single day. You know, we talk about individualizing, learning for each student, it couldn't happen without them. They're thinking outside the box, they're not the traditional thinkers that are happening. You know, Mr. Kaczynski just spoke and, you know, if you get in a room with him, it's like the Energizer Bunny. You can't, you know, not smile when you're around him. That's all of our staff. We have amazing staff there and they're really going above and beyond for all our students. And if we don't say that enough, you know, I want to thank them and it really makes my job really easy.
Yes, very much. Questions?
Yeah. This is time-related right now, but we, in the previous meeting, we spent some time talking about the fact that now we're only offering Spanish, because we only have a few kids that I think are interested in.
No, we still have French as well. Yeah, we do. So at the middle school level, there was a low interest at seventh grade. So they still have an eighth grade course of French at the middle school. And then obviously, we have our nine through twelve variations of French, one, two, three, four. We don't have any five this year because kids did, chose not to go for that level five in French. But we do offer so this year, because the numbers were small, from a French three and four standpoint, that's a combined section, but we do have that right now, yeah. The numbers were a little light in seventh grade this year.
Yeah, I understood that, we were talking, what kind of triggered my thoughts? We were talking about maybe an online sharing of the course without schools or whatever.
Yeah, we, we're, we're going to have to start thinking outside the box because if the numbers continue that way, then we have to provide other opportunities for kids too to balance out those numbers and make sure it's not all put on Spanish to try and tackle that.
I know that's a direction our country's going, but it's got options.
Yes, I, I agree a hundred percent. So we're, we're looking at all that too.
That's also conversations for other courses that we can look to, you know, regionalize and, and offer at one school if they have a teacher that can, and that's, it's not just French, but it's, we've had those conversations with various TC3 and various districts.
Great, because yeah, it's not going to be this one classroom anymore.
Correct.
We have to do a lot of that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
We used to do that.
Yeah.
We used to have model classrooms.
Yeah.
Where it was one, we'd have three or four schools connected with one teacher and then we'd have the go-album system in which we'd teach smaller number of classes. Usually they were more advanced ones. Yeah, we used to have models.
We're actually exploring the idea of sign language as well as a possibility of course.
Say it again, sorry.
Sign language.
Yeah.
Yes. So those are options we're looking into as well to say, okay, if this is the trend we're seeing, how do we continue to provide those options? Yes, good question.
Oh, I'm so impressed with the opportunities that our kids have and how successful they've been. Do we still purchase slots from Bosi's for the new visions program? Do we have kids participating in that as well?
Yeah, yeah. It, you, you know, it, it fluctuates every year who gets accepted, who gets in. But yeah, we love partnering with new visions, getting them, again, that hands-on experience outside of the building. Not that we don't want the kids in the building, but those opportunities, whether it's, you know, working in education, business, law, whatever those opportunities might be, I strongly and guided strongly and encourage students to apply and be a part of that.
I, I would agree, obviously, what Mike said, just to remind us of it for our students. Really appreciate the work you guys do to provide that. I'm always interested in the career development piece and is there any like longitudinal stuff kind of down the road where we can kind of cross-reference the students who may have gone to college? It's still fifty percent of our valley. If we can demonstrate that, you know, seventy percent of our kids finish when they get a college or stay in a major.
So as obviously you saw the snapshot of what we saw from our kids who graduated last year, one of the things that we've been working with Tom West out on is the alumni side of it is how do we stay connected with them and get that update of associate's four-year degree? I left after a semester and now I'm in the world of work and I'm working heavy equipment now. So we're trying to build that so we can add that data to what we already have from the four years there with us, but continue to expand off of that so we can keep that data over beyond just the four years of the alumni side of it.
Great, yeah. Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, ten point one, turnover of pay taxes in the motion. Any discussion?
I have a form that y'all need to sign before we leave. Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
White? Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Teresa?
Hi.
Public comment? Patty? No, you're good. I've spoken, yeah?
Sorry, I didn't sign in.
Oh, good.
I didn't, so don't do that. I just, I don't, I just didn't know when an appropriate time is to mention this. And he's not here, I don't know his name unfortunately, but a lot of us are done with the elementary school drop-off or you're already there working. I just want to give a shout-out to the crossing guard, that guy every day. I don't know his name, but he greets these kids. I'm back, I'm back with the drop-off, so I see, you know, I see him. And just a smile, a joke, I'm not one percent, but it looks like he's joking. And, you know, sometimes I've seen him shake their hands, like, it's just a nice way to start the day, so.
Who is it?
I don't know his name.
Well, Billy Edwards does help out too, but not, not.
Oh, no, the crossing guard is off the campus. These kids are walking to school, they're freezing and he's giving them a warm smile. It's just, he deserves a shout-out. Been doing it for years.
Okay. Twelve point one, next meeting. September eight. And twelve point two, pilot discussion, pilot communication discussion.
Yeah, so as I told you before, we have a document coming out, kind of having in the district that should be out shortly in, in every taxpayer's mailbox. And then we're going to follow up with information on pilot. Just want to thank, I want to thank Ian and her team as well for, you know, the support that they've, they've given us and, and understanding about what's really going on. And they, they certainly have been a good partner in communicating that out to folks. So thank you, thank you for that. I think they realize that this is, this is crucial work and getting the message right is, is most appropriate. So we'll continue to do that. I know the, the cops has several meetings set up with different teams around the district to sit down and have a, you know, a nice conversation about what we're faced with and so that they can kind of understand the realities of, of everything.
Will we, you have a schedule for the portrait of a graduate?
Oh, so we have a, this, what day is it this year?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, the nineteenth, we have a webinar where we're going to do kind of an overview of some of the blue ribbon changes. And then we'll get into, we'll get into some of those details and then we'll open up the questions for people to, to join in on.
Okay, Wednesday.
What time do we set your rule?
Seven?
Seven o'clock, okay.
Can we send a glass? Is that, is that already blasted out to everybody in the community that sort of will know?
We'll send another one ahead and, um, for sure.
Do you need executive session?
Yes.
Do you need a motion to move to the executive session?
I have a correction, Linda Fox. I get that she made the motion to move it to the other discussion and it was actually John and I corrected that.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you, thank you.
Are you coming? Linda, are you going to?